Good morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock, so go ahead and get the meeting started. Welcome to the April 12th, 2021 Pennington County Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on April 20th, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. If you're an applicant or an agent for a specific item, you don't have to fill one of those out. If you're here as public to speak on an item, I would ask that you fill one of those out and turn it in on this little plastic paper holder here at the end of the dais. Keeps me organized during the meeting. With that, we'll go ahead and get started. Roll call. We're all here except Kathy. Note that Ron is here from the board. First item on the agenda is approval of the March 22nd, 2021 minutes. Are there any changes, corrections, edits to the minutes? Hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I so move.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Second item today's agenda is approval of the agenda. Today's agenda consists of items three through six on the consent agenda, items, regular items seven through 13, followed by the county board report and our housekeeping items at the end of the agenda. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Seeing none from anybody in the audience as well, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, and further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Today's consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Maliner, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1409 for Jesse Reeve to review an existing single-family residence to be used as a second ranch and residence in the general agriculture district. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1409 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1410 for MDC Coast II LLC Conrad's Big C Signs as the agent to review two illuminated on-premise signs within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in the general commercial district. The staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1410 with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 1707 for Conrad Signs, Dvorak Real Estate Holdings is the owner, to review an internally illuminated sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in a highway service district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1707 with conditions. And finally, item six, conditional use permit review CU 20-10, Properties by Jen LLC, Jennifer Berger as the agent, to review a vacation home rental in a limited agriculture district. The staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 20-10 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items staff wishes to pull from the agenda? Are there any items that the board here wishes to pull from the agenda? For those folks in the audience, items three, four, five, and six on today's agenda are within the consent agenda. And if you're unfamiliar with that, that means that we will vote on all of those items at the same time, and they will not be heard for separate consideration. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to have separate consideration for any of those items? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of today's consent agenda, items three through six.
Move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, is there further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none in the room, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seven.
Good morning, Commissioner Chutima Saboon, Planning Department. Agenda item seven is conditional use permit CU 2112 to allow a camper to be used as a temporarily living quarters while working on the property and cabin during the spring, summer, fall, up to 180 days per calendar year. Site location is at 22619 North Roche Horn Road. The subject property is 1.18 acres, zone suburban residential district. Seven criterias. Criteria number one, it appears that by allowing this conditional use permit, it should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public, especially considering the temporally nature of the applicant's request. Criteria number two, the requested use should not be any, should not have any long-term negative effect on the use and enjoyment of the, of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area, considering the temporally nature of the applicant's request. Criteria four, access is of dedicated access on plan document 20-DAD-290 via the existing approach. The camper will utilize the existing onsite wastewater treatment system. Criteria five, it should not, it should not significantly affect traffic congestion because the requested use is no more than 180 days per calendar year. Criteria six, the current zoning is suburban residential district. The nature of the requested use is temporally, temporally use is allowed in this district with an approved permit, an approved conditional use permit per Pennington County zoning ordinance 204C. Criteria seven, the future land use of the subject property is also suburban residential district. Allowing this conditional use permit should not be, should be consistent with the current occupancy plan. So this, in this picture, the cabin is up on the top, and per Department of Equalization record, show that the cabin was built prior to 1994. That is an existing onsite wastewater treatment system. It was constructed and inspected in 2019 with COSD 190082, and that is no special flood hazard on the property. This request was routed for interdepartmental review. U.S. Forest Service make a comment. The Forest Service does not foresee any issue with the applicant request as long as his camper stays on the private property. And for other departments, there's no significant concern or objections to this conditional use permit request. On April 5th, staff perform a site visit, and up the top here is the existing cabin. The sign for the camper will be on the bottom right here, and the septic system is in the And this is existing approach, the location of the camper, they would take an access to the camper right here. On April 6th, staff contacted the applicant regarding the timeline when the property will be finished. He anticipates approximately two years for working on the cabin and the property. Also, he, his camper will, is equipped with a bathroom and a shower. The camper will utilize the existing onsite wastewater system. April 7th, staff receive an email from the applicant's neighbor that support his request. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2112 with 12 conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
I own the house and the cabin adjacent to this, to the south, and I don't see a problem with this at all.
Okay. Further questions for staff? Seeing none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 21-12 with 12 conditions. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, is there further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eight.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item eight is rezone RZ 21-07 and comprehensive plan amendment CA 21-03. The applicant did not send out the notification letters required in accordance with the zoning ordinance section 508, therefore no action can be taken at this time. This item will be heard at a later date when all notification requirements are met.
Staff is recommending to postpone this item?
Yes, until the requirements of our zoning ordinance are met, so.
So it would be continue without a specific date?
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, noting staff's recommendation to continue this item until adequate, help me up, notifications have been received by the department?
Correct. And in addition, this applicant is not sure if he wants to move forward with this rezone and may look at other options, but because he did not send out his notification letters, no action can be taken at this time, since it doesn't meet the requirements of our ordinance. But because it was advertised, we had to have it on the agenda.
Okay. So the staff's recommendation is to continue?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to, move to continue.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion.
Brittany, do we want to continue indefinitely or pick a date?
I would say indefinitely.
Or move to continue indefinitely?
Yes.
And does the second agree with that? All right.
Should we make that though before so that it doesn't cost him again? What do they call that?
He will have to pay to re-advertise and send out his letters.
Yeah, but I meant as far as the permit, we used to do, there was some wording at no prejudice or whatever.
Prejudice?
Yeah.
Oh, that's different when we deny. That's only in the denial.
It only works for the denial. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, motion and second for, to continue this item, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item nine.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Fennesson, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item nine is layout plan 21-13 to subdivide one lot and create four lots. The applicant and landowner is Betty Johnson. The agent is DC Scott Surveyors. Proposed legal description is lot 1A with lot 1B, lot 1C, and lot 1D of black metal, black, sorry, black metal number four, load MS 1986. Location right now is 23865 Deegan Drive off of Charnigulch Road. Currently consists of 14.14 acres, zone rural residential, which carries a three-acre minimum lot size, and existing land use is residential. The applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, therefore staff recommends approval of layout plan 21-13 with conditions. As the property sits today, it does contain a single wide mobile home, which is not permitted through the planning and zoning office, nor is it on Department of Equalizations records. And that goes for the onsite wastewater treatment system too. We were unable to identify that there was one or that it is functional. Access to the property is via Deegan Drive. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. As the property sits today is on the left side of the screen, proposed lots are on the right. Lot 1A is in red. It will consist of 3.42 acres and is vacant. Lot 1B is in blue, 3.43 acres, and it is also vacant. Lot 1C is in purple, three acres, and also vacant. And lastly, lot 1D is highlighted in green, and it will be 4.32 acres, and it does contain the single wide mobile home. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. No comments of concern were received. However, this morning, we did get an email from Commissioner Ross Connect. He stated that he just wanted to point out to the planning commission the topographical challenges that may impact future development on the proposed lots. He knows this area very well, and the majority of the black metal mineral surveys involve steep terrain and dense juvenile pine canopies. And again, the applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval of layout plan 21-13 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Jason, do we, can we, will this go through the MPL plat next?
I believe we're going to take this one through the preliminary plat because it does involve right-of-way.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that it had preliminary plat in that one condition. That's why I was wondering. I was hoping that we could get a reading on the building and the wastewater system before we looked at the preliminary.
Right, and I forgot to mention, that is included as a condition of approval.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Let's go, Ron.
So Jason, on item 13, the staff report, it says physical description, that's just a category, and it says flat slash open prairie. My only recommendation on the staff report on this was that we have the same category, physical description, and explain the topography. I don't want to see a lot get sold down the future that is so, the topography is so bad that they're going to come to the commission later on in life and ask for variances because they don't have a spot to build a house, or a spot to build a garage, or a spot to build a car park.
Right.
So I just want that awareness out there. I'm all for subdividing, but just want to make sure that those lots will support a single-family residence.
Sure.
Jason, is the single wide mobile home occupied?
It did not appear to be when I did my site visit. It almost looks like it was just kind of placed in, not used, but I do need to get some clarification from the landowner before we proceed forward.
Thank you.
Other questions on this item for staff? Seeing none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, noting that staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL 21-13 with seven conditions. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 10.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, item 10 is ordinance amendment OA 21-03 to amend section 204I, standards for manufactured homes, modular homes, and site or stick-built homes. To amend and supersede the existing section 204I for standards for manufactured home, modular homes, and site or stick-built homes of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. I just wanted to point out the two biggest changes in this requirement is it does take out, if you look in the existing text, under I number four, it says the minimum dimensions of any single-family residence shall be 20 feet by 20 feet. That means the requirement for a single wide mobile home would not meet that 20 by 20. Most single-wide mobile homes are somewhere between 14 and 16 feet wide. So with that, and then if you go down on the existing number seven, it says manufactured home, modular homes, and site or stick-built homes not meeting any of the above standards shall obtain a conditional use permit. That is why this commission has seen conditional use permits for single-wide mobile homes. Doing some research and working with the state's attorney's office, we thought that that was a little onerous for every single-wide mobile home to get a conditional use permit. Not only that, but we also believe that a conditional use permit is not the right mechanism, and it should be a variance for, because it's actually a dimensional requirement, and in our zoning ordinance, most dimensional requirements, if they have to have any variance, so that goes through the variance process through the Board of Adjustment. So we made those changes in the proposed text. We did have some basic standards for that. If you go to section number five in the proposed, the minimum dimensions would be for site or stick-built. So anything that's a site or stick-built home would be that 20 by 20, which would include area within a larger building, like if they build a chopper barn buildings where they have living quarters. And then we did update that, that if it doesn't comply, then it would require a variance. So those are just kind of the basic oversviews of the requirements, so I can entertain any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm not a mobile home expert, Brittany, but, okay, so you're saying a modular or mobile home, the minimal width has got to be 20 feet?
No, we're removing that currently. That is the requirement. So currently, they would have to come to the planning commission and get a conditional use permit for every single-wide mobile home if there wasn't one already issued in the county.
But I might suggest when we review these, whether it's the commission or the commission, that you say this is, we make a statement, this is what it is, another statement below it, this is what we suggest.
Oh, on these?
Right, just so, because I don't know these by heart like your department does, and on a weekend when you're reviewing them, it'd just be easy to say, this is what it is, this is what we want to do it, change it. Just makes it easier to digest.
Okay. And those were the two major changes with this section. And the 304, the next section goes along with this section because they kind of go hand in hand with one another with the mobile homes and manufactured homes.
So you're taking the 20-foot requirement out, 20 by 20-foot requirement out of this existing text, applying that only to site and stick-built homes, and then making a statement in here that says that mobile manufactured homes shall comply with section 304?
Correct.
My only question is always the outliers. Some of these tiny homes, and I don't know what the specific dimension is of these things if there's, if there is one, but some are stick-built, some are modular. Are those accounted for somehow in either one of these?
So as far as the tiny homes, the minimum requirements, if you, when we go to 304, would be that 14 by 56. Those are kind of the minimum requirements. It would be addressed through there. If they wanted something smaller than that 14 by 56, they would have to get a variance from the Board of Adjustment.
So if someone wants to build a house inside of a shipping container or something that's eight by 40, that requires a variance?
The way that our ordinances are written or being proposed, yes. Currently, right now, they would require a conditional use permit under the way that it's written right now. However, we believe that that's not, we see that as a variance, not a conditional use permit.
Got it. Further questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair. So Brittany, I'm developing some lots, and my tenants are going to be putting probably tiny homes. And those tiny homes are going to be 14 feet by 36 feet. So are they going to need a variance or a conditional use permit?
They would need a variance, but moving forward, that would probably be better if it's a whole subdivision approached in something like a PUD overlay or something like that.
Okay, so we're a PUD, so we'd probably be covered there.
Right. With, with the proposed language that's coming, and that will be at a new meeting with the PUD overlays, that would be a better mechanism if it's going to be a whole subdivision to address.
A tiny home, the whole concept, they got to be under, they got to be under 400 square feet.
Correct. They're like a park model type size.
Right. That's what I'm talking about, a park model, yeah.
Right.
Further questions for staff? Go ahead, Charlie.
Mine a little bit more specific. I assume we're still on 2103. I have a tendency to get ahead of myself, you know, Brittany.
Yes.
All right. Number, be number one, Roman numeral number one, letter J, you've got cement. I suggest you change that to concrete because cement itself is part of concrete, but it isn't concrete.
Good catch. Agree with that change.
Next, in, okay, be siding, number four. I think you've got to add concrete. Concrete's kind of a new big thing that you're seeing in the hills on both roofing and siding. There's companies offering this as long as your structure will hold the weight of the concrete, especially in the log look siding. There's new companies. And finally, then water connection. My suggestion would be read like this. The domestic water connection must be a identical to the requirements of any dwelling in that zoning district. Because it may not be the same as any other dwelling in the zoning district, but the requirements, it's got to meet the requirements of how it's attached. I didn't have anything else.
Further changes, proposed changes to the ordinance amendment? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Okay. Staff is recommending approval of section 204. It sounds like there has been three proposed changes. One would be section I, one, J would change from cement to concrete. Section I, four, and then it would be a new item, would be concrete. And then the third change would be identical to the requirements of any dwelling in that district on 6A. Did I catch them all?
That's one side.
I move that we move this forward, the per staff recommendation of ordinance amendment 21-03.
Noting that change is correct.
With corrections noted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 11.
Item 11 is ordinance amendment OA 21-04 to amend section 304 mobile homes. To amend and supersede the existing section 304 mobile homes of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And we did discuss some of the changes already in the prior. We can just go down the list here. One of the biggest changes is that it will require a HUD certification moving forward on mobile and manufactured homes. Currently, at this time, we do not require any HUD certifications or construction standards for mobile homes.
Question then on that? Or I can wait till you're done going through your list, and then I'll ask a question. Sorry.
Sure. And then, like I said, anything that isn't met with these standards would require a variance, and the minimum requirements that we have in here is the 14 by 56, and that's under construction standards.
So my first question would be, do all mobile homes have the HUD label after 1974?
Yes. The ones that don't are prior to 1974. Right now, we don't have any requirements or year requirements, so we have mobile homes from the 50s that don't have the HUD certification. Now, if they do want to come in and place a mobile home, now this doesn't affect existing ones that are already placed, but if they move it or want to place one, they would have to get a variance from the Board of Adjustment for that construction standard.
I'm good with that. The width, the length were as note, as you noted before. And then my next question was, the factory-installed wood hardboard or siding home must have factory-installed wood hardboard or siding with a wood appearance? Don't some of these have something other than a wood appearance? They have like, they have ones with metal siding and some other things?
We took that from the original requirements up front, but we could add, or similar, or not with a wood appearance, I guess, if that's what you're, you're saying like if they had vinyl-type siding?
Yeah, I just know, I, I think that some of these have like, yeah, metal siding, steel siding, just for durability and some of those other things, and I thought it was interesting that we're proposing. And I thought it was interesting that we're proposing to only have wooden hardboard versus, uh, other materials that are out there. So, right or wrong? Questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Um, I'm looking on page three of four. When, uh, number four, right at the top, it says new mobile home, manufactured module home. Do we mean to have new in that?
Yes. So there's, um, brand new and pre-owned ones, because we have different, um, yeah, because the pre-owned ones would be prior.
Well, but it seems like the A, B, and C have more to do with the used, was built. That's history. As a dwelling for any other, eh, eh, or for any other purpose. And I put a question mark by that, any other purpose, what that means, than has been titled. That's used. Polly?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I just wondered why you had new up.
There should be has not probably been titled.
Okay. Has not.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Brittany, we had a gentleman last year, and I'm sure everybody kind of remembers who it is, but when does a mobile home become a single family residence? And what he did is he took a mobile home, that's probably after seventy four, it's probably HUD. And then he put an addition on, then he totally gutted it and put new plumbing in, new electrical. He took the title, sent it to the pier, they shredded it. It sold, or it was conveyed via a warranty deed. And he claims that it was a, when he tried to sell it, he tried to, tried to sell it as his single family residence. He said it's no longer a mobile home because it's got new plumbing, it's got new electrical, it's got new mechanical. The title's been shredded. It sold, uh, via a warranty deed. And so, any ideas on that? I'm just curious, because there's a lot of that out there.
Sure, and we work with equalization to determine how they're, um, assessing it on that particular, when they did assess it as a mobile home and not a single family residence, um, based on whatever standards that they use. Uh, so we would, and in that instance, we worked with equalization to get the determination, um, how they looked at it. That one was, um, installed prior, um, in that subdivision in particular. Um, there was a lot of mobile homes that were placed there after the flood and that's pretty common in that neighborhood. Uh, most of those mobile homes were placed prior to our ordinance and, and things. Um, so those conversions were made, you know, prior to us requiring building permits, but that is common in that neighborhood.
Right.
Very much so.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I thought it had to do with how it was affixed to the ground.
Yeah.
The mobile home.
That's what it used to be.
Well, you can still have a mobile home on a permanent foundation. You can still have a, a foundation with the basement and have a mobile home placed.
I see. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Brittany, on, on that item number four, the factory installed, could you put a comma after factory installed, comma wood, comma hardboard or siding? This factory installed would include the metal siding.
It could.
Good point.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to explain a little bit more of what Stan and he was talking about, because just not to be confused. A mobile home, to put it on a foundation, the frame would have to be left intact underneath the mobile home. A modular home, that frame is removed and the modular home is then put on the foundation. Extremely different point. Uh, because then the mobile home, if you remove that frame, then you would have to have an engineer redesign the, the load points uh, for the entire unit. Just to let you know, and that, and that involves a considerable amount more of expense. So we don't want to end up requiring somebody puts, put a mobile home on a foundation where then we're saying we want to remove the road gear and the frame being part of the road gear. That was one of the things that I was going to bring up is, is the frame part of the road gear. It is on a modular home, but it's not on a mobile home. Just so we know that. We, we're going to get confused by that if we don't get the wording right.
And they're, um, different, but they're in the same, you know, because we have modular homes, we have off-site stick built homes, which are better known as governor's homes. Um, so we have very different, um, I guess, there's a, a wide variety of.
Yeah, I didn't want anybody not to think, but there's people that mount mobile homes on foundations to avoid the skirting and the problems that you get with weather and whatnot.
Right.
However, it's a totally different installation than a modular home.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And if you look at number, section number nine, it says a home must have all towing devices, wheels, axles, and bolt-on hitches removed.
Yeah, I saw it, said hitches and axle, yeah. But we may want to include the frame on a modular home, that they do take the frame out from underneath. Because modular home is designed to be put on a foundation with certain load points.
Requirements. I think those kinds of issues are probably better done under our building code and building permits.
Yeah. So that you can define which unit is which. That's probably a good point. Thank you.
Further questions on this item?
Uh, one more.
Go ahead.
What's a, the difference between modular and a manufactured then?
They have, one has the wheels and the axles on it and one does not. Because the modu- the modulators are, are built offsite. They're almost stick built in a sense and like two pieces, um, where the other ones are not. Those are defined in our ordinance.
Well, then I, what's the difference between mobile and a modular?
One can be transported.
They're both on frames, right?
Right. So that we have them defined a little differently in our zoning areas and I don't have those definitions in front of me.
Kind of confusing.
Well, that's what Charlie just said. The mobile would have the frame that would remain underneath it. The modular gets taken off of its transport frame and placed on a foundation. Is that, am I stating that correctly, Charlie?
And you'll see when you're moving them, you'll see, uh, if you count the axles that are underneath a modular, you'll find there's probably twice the axles underneath the modular because of the weight of the construction to hold that. Where the, uh, weight is all carried on the axles and the frame that spreads it out on a mobile. That's why there's so many more axes. It's, it's actually quite a, a bit heavier unit, the modular.
So we have the definition as a modular home and our zoning ordinance is a factory fabricated, transportable building consisting of units installed on a permanent foundation construction or as per manufacturer's recommendation and used as a single family dwelling. And then a mobile home is defined as a transportable, factory-built home designed to be used as a year-round, single-family dwelling and not constructed under the authority of the federal manufacturer housing construction and safety standard of nineteen seventy four. And then manufactured home is a factory-built, single-family structure that is manufactured under the authority of the National Manufactured Home Construction and Safety Standard Act of nineteen seventy four. Transportable in at least one section, built on a permanent chassis and uses a place of human habitation. There's three different.
Just have one more question because of that. I assume then, uh, we get contractors, quarry folks that apply for conditional use to put their offices and that sort of thing on a temporary basis on those locations for whatever the permit duration is. I assume that's, we're covering those under the accessory, uh, building or structure.
Those are typically under a temporary building permit.
Okay.
And then under a C U P for contractor storage yard.
They don't fall into this situation, even if they use, some of them use a mobile, some of them use a skid type?
Yeah, they typically just haul them in, set them in, they use them for the duration. Uh, it typically falls under that contractor storage yard, the C U P, and it's a temporary building permit.
Thank you.
And they're removed.
Okay. Further questions on this item? Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none and hearing none, I noted that in section A four B, the word not would be installed before been, so it has not been titled. Um, we would put a comma after factory installed on, uh, A E, or excuse me, E four to indicate, um, alternatives besides the wood and hardboard on siding for those items. And those were the, the only items that I had noted. Is that correct?
Sounds good.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
With respect to E four, I think a good solution might be to just put a period after siding and then omit with a wood appearance. That way, I think that'll give a homeowner more freedom and it won't be as restrictive.
Okay, I agree with that. Any concerns with that change on the board? Seeing none. Noting those changes, um, discussed, uh, today. Is there, uh, staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment twenty one dash zero four. Is there a motion?
I'd move approval of ordinance amendment twenty one dash zero four with the changes.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twelve.
Item twelve is ordinance amendment O A twenty one dash zero five, to amend ordinance one oh six, public nuisance, to amend and supersede the existing ordinance one oh six, public nuisance. Um, this is a complete rewrite of this ordinance. This isn't something that's under our zoning ordinance. This is a separate standalone ordinance, um, that is used by our ordinance enforcement officer, who is in the audience, if you have any, uh, particular questions, um, regarding. But this is a complete rewrite of this ordinance. Um, it's mostly done for clarity. I think it, we think it flows much better. Uh, it actually gives a section under section five, which we declare particular nuisances. Um, and then how we notify property owners when they do have a nuisance and then the remedies that the county has and the homeowners have, uh, when nuisances are, um, found on property. Like I said, section number five is probably the biggest change, because it makes it, um, pretty clear which, what situations that we consider a nuisance. Is there any questions on individual?
You know you couldn't get by without some.
No, I know.
I've got some. One of the ones I, uh, had added and I spoke to you earlier about is, uh, page seven of ten. Um, it's item C, very top of the page. I believe you should add engine into those missing parts. That's one of the most common, uh, things that happen when people begin to accumulate these cars. Outside, they have a perfectly good car and they lost the engine or the transmission and they remove it waiting to find another. So I believe we should add engine to that.
On where? Seven of ten?
Yeah, it's page seven of ten and it's item C at the top. Has a broken window, flat tire, no tires, missing parts, including, uh, the engine. Yeah. That's, eh, when you go out there, that's exactly, you see tons of these without the engine, um, sitting there.
Okay. Other items?
Then I still have questions. If you go to the next page, item M, uh, words included unlicensed motors, motor vehicles. I still have, I've always scratched my head why we allow them four in the first place, but, uh, we have to get to five, right? So we basically allow them four. That's just the question mark of my mind. Then, oh, and I saw this again referred to many times in here, has, that has been transported from the point of generation. Well, what if it was generated there? Then that doesn't qualify?
Would that mean?
You know, on spread of manure, it says, for instance, what if it had been generated there? It, if it was on a parcel that was ten acres and they had a horse.
I think that means when they like pile it all up and they leave the piles.
Oh.
That's the point of generation.
I've read it, that they brought it in to use in their garden and never used it. So, just the difference in interpretation. It really doesn't say. It says brought in from the point of generation.
Commissioner Johnson, I think that's a good point, because the way we look at ordinances and laws is what it says. It doesn't matter what we intend it to be. So I think that's a good point. We could put in accumulation of manure. And just omit that has been transported from the point of generation.
Okay.
And I think that might encapsulate both of those.
Okay. Uh, then the next page, nine of ten, item number four, under, uh, content and notice. Um, are, are we going to have anything? It says request for hearing before board with thirty days from the day the service of the notice. Are we going to have any nuisances that, uh, require an immediate type, an action or hearing as quick as you can? In other words, before a judge, where you get an injunction, that sort of thing. Just, just a question? And then the last page.
Before we go on to that.
Sure, Colin.
We have the ability to go get an injunction if needed. Um, those should be and are extremely rare.
Right.
Uh, that's when we have an immediate threat to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the community and.
Could you do it under this ordinance, do you think, Colin?
What we would do is file a complaint and summons and start.
I see.
An injunction over at the circuit court. We're not going to go through the ordinance or something like that. This is more for your everyday run-of-the-mill nuisances. This isn't for something that is a legitimate threat uh, to public health, safety, or general welfare. And I probably should walk that back. Uh, legitimate is the wrong word. It's an immediate threat. This is one that could have
Right.
severe repercussions if we didn't address it right away.
Somebody stopped filing uranium two thirty five or something. Yeah, I agree. Okay, and the last thing I had is your maximum punishment and your continuing, uh, offense. I've always found that we have similar in our, uh, ordinance regarding, uh, wastewater control. And I've always found that a little bit comical. We talk about, uh, thirty days incarceration or five hundred dollar fine. I think, and we even had one recently go through and they look at it, they don't continue it by every day. They look, whoa, these guys only want two hundred dollars and we're not going to stick them in the jail for the thirty days and there it goes. It, it's tough to put any meat in that is what I'm saying. And, and some of these deserve some meat. Go ahead.
Commissioner Johnson, I agree with you. The maximum punishment is set by statute. The legislature tells counties what they can do. We can't go over that. As far as the continuing.
The maximum?
Yes, the maximum.
Thank you.
And then it's up to a judge to find what the appropriate punishment would be for each individual offense based on the circumstances of that offense. And oftentimes it doesn't involve jail. Which, uh, sometimes can be frustrating, but, um, hopefully throughout the process, they'll learn that they need to comply with the ordinance. And as far as the continuing offense, each day after they're put on notice, really constitutes a new offense, because they had the opportunity to remedy that. So each day, so you can snack it up. That doesn't necessarily mean that the judge is going to impose something larger than the maximum punishment for one. Um, really, it's up to the judge. And then as far as charging it out, that falls to me as the attorney. Most of the time, we're not going to charge it out. Uh, where if somebody has an ordinance violation, we're not going to charge out three hundred sixty five. That's unnecessary paperwork. It doesn't do anything. The idea behind taking them to court and enforcing these is to ensure that the ordinances that the planning commission and the county commission enact are enforced. So oftentimes, when we're dealing with a violation, as long as they remedy it, I will dismiss it. Because the whole idea, at least to me and the planning department, is that we need compliance to eliminate that public health, safety, or general welfare threat.
Okay, my point though is, i- i- in reality, to pursue these things for both parties. And especially if you've got a party out there, let's say we're pursuing, we dig our heels in and they've dug their heels in on the issue. To pursue those things is, is so costly that, that this becomes eh, the offense or the jail time and the fine is almost moot. It's a joke compared to the cost by both parties. I'm not going to say who's right or wrong here. To pursue these things, uh, that we're out of the realm of reality with thirty days in jail and five hundred dollars. Eh, people can go on and on. We just had that happen in the. People can go on and on. We just had that happen in the county. And when you see the end result, the citizens say, what did we even spend the money for?
But at that point, doesn't wouldn't the public works director or excuse me, the planning director have the authority to abate it? And then we assess that to the property. I mean, there comes a point of diminishing returns where it's.
Abate that? You said abate the action?
Yeah. So if there's if things don't look like it's going anywhere and and the decision's made to go and abate it, then that happens and that gets assessed to the property as a lien.
That tends to be our most effective tool, to be honest, is the abatement. And anything over that thousand dollars, our ordinance enforcement gets bids and then we would go in front of the planning commission or planning or the board of commissioners to get approval to to spend that. And we have in the past done that. But that has been the most effective way to to get nuisances remedied.
Without being specific, and that's what I'm trying not to be. The latest one of these that went all the way through the court. Other than receiving the fine, have we remedied the situation? Thank you.
Further questions?
I just had one.
Go ahead.
One comment, and that's on page one of ten, section one, public nuisance. I think when they talk about, you know, it annoys, injures, endangers the comfort, whatever, and in any way renders other persons insecure in life from the use of their property. I really think we should take this into consideration when these people are trying to get vacation home rentals and the neighbors. You know, they feel annoyed, they feel threatened, they feel, you know, all kinds of things. And so I just think it's important to remember these items. Thank you.
Commissioner Runde, I also want to point out that the definition we have from nuisance comes from statute. Just so everyone is aware.
Yeah, I I understand. I I just I just feel sometimes we don't put a lot of weight or I I don't put as much weight as I should on the neighbor's complaints. Because their state of mind, you know, is real to them. So it's my only comment. Thank you.
Chair.
Go ahead.
I have a comment on page seven of ten, item number four, under nuisance.
Page one of ten, section.
Seven. Oh, I'm sorry. Seven of ten, item four, number B. It just it seems awfully vague to me. It just says offends decency. I had some suggested language. My my husband's an attorney and he says offends decency according to contemporary community standards.
I'm sorry, what section is that?
It's under nuisance on page seven of ten.
It's under section, section four, B definitions for nuisance B.
Because what offends me might not offend somebody else.
How are you going to define the second part of that, though?
Well.
If I may interject, that's a statutory definition. So we don't have the authority, I don't think, to come in and amend it. The original draft. I wanted to change that to make it more understandable, but the legislature has occupied the field here. And while I think that your husband might have a good point, that it could update with the times, the legislature has told us what nuisance is.
Wow.
They told us what decency is.
Yeah, yeah. It's vague. That's something for courts to figure out.
Is there a definition of decency in our ordinance anywhere? I didn't see one in this.
Karen, statewide, we can only have less decency, not more decency. Otherwise, we're in violation.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I've got to compliment your department for tackling this thing. I I know some of the things I said still don't fit. But we had a period in this county where we went through this and it was greatly abused. And it was difficult for the commissioners like Mr. Ruskinak to have anything to fall back on to truly stand by and say, here, this is a nuisance. So I I really do. It's been a cumbersome, terrible one oh six has been referred to. And people that after they referred to it, don't want anybody to ever find it. Used to have to tell people where to find this thing because it wasn't in our our planning and zoning departments. They had to get a copy off the internet or something. So thank you.
Further comments, questions?
And then I do want to point out in section seven, notice A two on page nine of ten. It reads if a nuisance exists, the planning director designated must give written notice to one, the owner or occupant of the property upon which the nuisance exists, or section two is specific to one of the nuisances that is declared. I think we can omit two because it is subsumed in number one. So then we would just have one and three, but three would become two.
Is this something that we vote on to approve or not?
Yeah, I'll go through and summarize the changes as I've had them here based on based on this. So we're all on the same page. So we understand what we're voting on. Further changes? Okay, so I'll summarize here things real quick. On page six of ten, I did not have any proposed changes. On page seven of ten, under section B two C, the we were going to where they add engine, missing engine to the definition, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We did not do anything with item on that same page. For nuisance, letter B, offends decency. We did not do any changes to that. We're leaving that as is. On page eight of ten, there was discussion about accumulation of more than five inoperable vehicles. That was item I. There was discussion, but no change to that definition. Correct? We just we just said, I guess five is the number.
Which one?
I. Page eight of ten. Letter I, accumulation of more than five.
Look at change. I just I've we've stuck with this five for so long. Five, if it's a small lot and it's a one acre, five's a lot of vehicles.
We don't have any right now.
Don't have any vehicles.
That's why I worked with our ordinance enforcement officer because that seems to be a and he can speak to it too, quite numerous of, excuse me, numerous amounts of our complaints are these accumulation of inoperable vehicles and we don't have a number.
So if I tell you two, I'm going to get a lot of phone calls, right?
Maybe.
Yeah.
We were trying to find some some common ground because we do have people that.
How did you pick five? Then help me out. How'd you pick five, Brittany? How'd you get that one?
Dwayne and I discussed it and looked at kind of the number that are typically on a lot, you know, when it starts to become very noticeable. Most of them, when they get, you know, if they have three or four, it's not horrible. But there's ones that have ten, twelve.
Well, that's what I was going to say. I.
It's it's.
Two seems, but there's twenty-five wouldn't be enough for some. So.
You are correct.
Because I know one right along three eighty-five must have at least twenty-five.
So we were trying to find just like kind of a common ground so that those individuals that wanted to work on vehicles or fix them up or save them for salvage for steel till the steel prices go up. Those are the types of.
I'll go I'll go with the the department's recommendation with five then.
I'm with you. I say we start at five and if it needs to be amended, we amend it.
Correct.
Any other comments on that? So we're leaving I alone. The next item I had was letter O and we were going to put a period after unspread accumulation of manure period and then delete the rest of the sentence, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The following item I had was on page nine of ten, under section seven, notice, section A. Number two, we're deleting two in its entirety and item three becomes item, item three becomes two. Okay. There was discussion regarding the under that same section seven, section or letter B, item four, to inform the property owner with regards to immediate versus the the time of delay, but I didn't note any specific change.
Based on what Colin said, I would leave it as is.
Okay, so no change there. And then section ten, under the maximum punishment, that's by statute and no changes were recommended at that location.
I agree, Mr. Chair.
I think I got them all. Did I? Anybody else?
No, that's what I had.
Staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment twenty-one dash zero five, noting the changes that were just made. Is there a motion?
Is it twenty-one oh four or five?
So five.
We're on oh five.
Okay, we had four on that last page.
And there is a motion.
So move for approval is changed.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion. Confirm no one in the audience wishes to speak on this item. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen is preliminary plat PPL twenty-one dash zero six to create lot two of block two and lot one and lot two of block three and lot seven through lot ten of block three of Cedar Gulch number two subdivision and dedicated right of way. This preliminary plat was in front of this commission and you had recommended to continue this until the board of commissioners made a determination on the subdivision regulations variances. On April sixth, twenty twenty-one, the board of commissioners did deny the subdivision regulations variances to waive the development of the second means of ingress egress and submit engineered road plans and construct the ordinance fourteen standards and to waive the requirement to obtain written authorization from the local water supplier that there is adequate water supply to serve the proposed subdivision. This subdivision regulations variance was denied. That means it it wasn't denied without prejudice. That means that the request for the subdivision regulations cannot be brought back for at least a year. If they request to or they wish to request that variance again. So staff is recommending approval of this preliminary plat. However, be aware that that is a requirement that they would still have to build the road to standard or get the variance. Preliminary plats once approved are good for two years. So if they do decide to come back in front of the board of commissioners within a year, this and are successful with getting those subdivision regulation variances, or they could build the road to standard. Or there is one other option that this planning commission could add is that they could require the assurances or surety be posted to construct the road. So those are the options for this preliminary plat. If this commission wishes to approve it.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item? No questions for staff? I have some questions. Initially, when we went through the layout plat, there was also statements in there that required them to have some sort of deed restriction on the lot. I I moved forward at that point with the understanding that we were essentially moving forward to help meet the requirements of the court order with regards to the plating and the and the transference of that property. And so but we were going to do that all the all the well, knowing that one homes can't be built on there based on the water sewer and access requirements. And then this came forward, the the variance got requested and and now the variance is denied. Is there anything? Did I miss the the it says no building permits will be issued on proposed lot two of block two lots, one of two and block three until such time sewer line is installed and connected to the existing lagoon. But doesn't the no building permit on any of the lots also apply to connecting to inadequate water supply as well as the access?
The water supply issue, we don't have anything that requires that. As far as the wastewater, we do. We have met with the applicant's attorney and looking to find a way that they could actually transfer the property without plating so that that issue would be, you know, as far as them getting the the land into their name, they'd have to work with the register of deeds to do that. But as far as plating and developing these lots, we do have a new section two oh four F that does require that on a dead end road system that we wouldn't issue a building permit. So that kind of covers that deed restriction. If they would want to waiver to that, they would have to go to the board of adjustment to get a variance for that to the two oh four F. So we could issue a building permit. So the deed restriction is really unnecessary at that point with that in our zoning ordinance at this time.
So at this point, you they come in for a building permit, the answer is no. And the answer is no because it's it doesn't meet the the ordinance.
Correct. The two oh four F. And if they wish to have another dwelling, they would have to go in front of the board of adjustment to request a waiver to that two oh four F to allow additional building permits for dwellings.
Okay.
On a dead end road system.
So now I'm going to cue in on something that you just said. Staff is working with them or their attorney to find or the equalization to find another means of transference of of the property. If that happens, what's the purpose of this?
I believe they still wanted to plat the lots.
That can't be built.
Mr. Chair.
I'm confused.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, so item nine, I said, why, you know, until we understand that topography, are we going to prove a lot that really has no utility? Because people buy these residential lots to build a home on. And we've seen other situations in the last few months where people buy lots and they find out, geez, I have to do this. I, you know, I just want to make sure that we're looking after the general public. So you can plant these lots, that's fine. Some are another. You can probably sell the lots and that's fine. But when the people go to sit there and build on the lots and they find out they got access and water and sewer, that's not fine in my book. And I just think we're, I just have a hard time letting somebody plat a lot that has no utility at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
I agree.
Go ahead. Hold on a second. Did you have anything else? Was that it?
What's that?
Did you have any other questions?
No, I just wanted to, I just don't understand why they want to go forward until we get a lot of stuff rectified and I just I just don't want to sell somebody down the road a bill of goods that looks good, but it tastes bad.
Okay, so then we'll go to Charlie and we'll come back to you.
I know. I just agree.
Okay, go ahead, Charlie.
Thank you. I have more of a tendency. We're stuck in a dilemma here. We have a court order that doesn't direct us as a commission what we're supposed to do to move on from here. Basically, it it delineated what the parties were supposed to do. We keep talking about, and I've talked about, that I hate to do an additional vote and an additional measure when we haven't even met the the requirements of the past measures yet. And yet we're sticking them in there and moving forward. I instead would rather look to something that could get this off a dead center and get it moving one way or the other. And for starters, the lack of access to that pond, the septic pond, and the lack of access to the well by the people that live there, the water board, this sort of thing. That troubles me. And I would rather see as a movement of good faith, turn around and say, I'm going to continue what we have in front of us, but I want to see some movement in good faith between the parties involved here. And go forward, work out some sort of access that's between the two. Now that we don't have to address that issue then in our requirements. And they're not there right now, but they've somehow they have to have access to repair those things if they're going to get them. Even as new properties on there, if that's the way it goes. But at least that's a in good faith move to get this thing going. Because right now, I can't see voting through another measure that has the same things that weren't performed before that is runs into the same dead end on the road and the water issues. What are we doing? We're not doing anything certainly for the property owners involved, which would include the request before.
Well, just to answer your question, this is just one part of it. They wouldn't be able to file the actual plat until they meet all the requirements. So if they don't meet those requirements in the two years, let's just say that it was approved. If they don't meet the requirements to even submit the, they can't even submit. If they don't meet the requirements to even submit the, they can't even submit the final plat. The final plat is needed to actually file the Mylar.
Well, I understand that. What I'm saying is, they can't even get together to see what the maintenance condition and what they could do to move forward. I looked at the well drawings, and they went to, they could have professionals look at it and get the situation to see what they really have. They can't even put their foot on the property, go do it, as the, what would you call it, quasi-sanctioning body for the thing, the sanitary district. Somehow, that has to be resolved here so that this side can get moving, the rest of them. I think they've got to have access. I think somebody's got to be responsible for reviewing that well and reviewing the pond. It is only a gray water pond, but i-if you can't do that, then the parties are, as far as parties they can be to move forward with this, even, they still don't have access to what they need to do to solve this, let alone the road. The road's going to be a big one, because these folks have dug in their pocket, there's no question, many times, to do this. I'll bet some of them dug in their pocket and never got reimbursed at all. It didn't involve the whole outfit, because I've seen people do that, that feel compelled to get something done, so they'll go pay. They pay for mailings, they pay for phone calls and their time and this sort of thing, or people that they go out there and visit it with, out of their own pocket, let alone everybody's pocket. So what I'm suggesting here is that this commission, can we, Colin, that's what I'm asking, can we do something and say, in good faith, we want this solved, come back with this? In other words, we continue this for right now. That's my opinion.
Commissioner Johnson, I think you can continue it, of course. And I know Mr. Wizerik is back here representing the Water District or the Sanitary District, and he'll be able to inform you more about the steps moving forward between the parties. But as far as continuing it, I think that is an option that's on the table, that this commission could continue it indefinitely until such time as the conditions are met, or just continue it out to a different date. It's up to the commission.
Okay, thank you. You can see what I'm saying. I see this like parents that are given a judge's order for custodial care, and somebody else has to pay in support for that. And the judge, they don't worry about whether the person can afford whatever the support is, they order it. And I think that's what we're looking here. Somebody decided this and put this together, and whether it's coming back with more lots, less lots, forget it. We can't even get on the property to review one of the basic problems in this, and that's the septic and the water, let alone the road. The road's been an issue, not just for these people, but the road's been an issue for everybody that's built out there. And that needs to get addressed as well. But I'm just saying, we need some good faith between these parties. They're the North Pole and the South Pole right now, it looks to me like. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, I just want to address that the court order doesn't bind Pennington County, it doesn't tell us to do anything. It's between the parties. Working with their attorney and the Register of Deeds and the Planning Department, I think there's a way that they could potentially transfer the property, so Mr. Howie can now become the record owner. I don't know where we're at in that process is. But then, they would still have to come back and plat and meet all the requirements set forth. And as part of that, I think that they would have to meet with the Water District or the Sanitary District.
I just felt that would give them the motivation to get from spot A to a spot B, because they've got to sit and talk. I have some ideas, certainly in the way I would proceed on it, if I was sitting on one side or the other at the table. But in this case, I think somebody's got to decide, something's got to move forward so that we can look at the next thing. And we're not moving forward on anything so far. We actually retreated a little. Thank you.
Further questions for staff on this item? Okay. We do have a speaker request form on this item from Talbot Wizerik, representing the Cedar Gulch Sanitary District. Sir, if you'd state your name for the record.
Talbot Wizerik with Gunnarson Palmer for Cedar Gulch Sanitary District, which is the sanitary district that I assisted in coming to being, so they could try to keep the water running out there after this, after Mr. Howie's original project fell apart. And I want to start with just a couple of things. So Commissioner Johnson, as listening to your comments, I want to make clear to everybody, the sanitary district was not a party in the lawsuit. We are not involved in it, we're not conferred with by anybody on the resolution. So the sanitary district had retained me after this got, I've done work for them off and on, I do work for a number of different sanitary districts. They use me sparingly because they're a very small district and I cost money. They don't have a lot, and they just soon put it back to the system if they could. But they retained me because this has gotten so far down the line, and nobody had approached them, nobody. Now, Mr. Howie now has hired counsel, who called me last week to set up a meeting, but then has kind of pushed that off because he's pursuing this discussion about whether they can get this transferred without a plat pursuant to the court order. Regarding this plat, I have to say, I think the plat's very disingenuous, because the court order basically gave them three parcels because they were unconnected. And they come in and they ask for seven lots, though. And that signal there, to me, is simply, we're going to sell these, we just want them. It's not, I want to get the order figured out, so me and the guy I sued could go the other way. Otherwise, he'd come in and just ask for the three parcels that corresponded to the three chunks of land he got it. So by adding multiple more parcels in this plat, it's not to solve the court issue, it's to give him parcels. Going to Commissioner Roskinex's comments, that's the concern that the district sees also, is that you give them the parcels, somebody else ends up owning them, and they're the, what they would say, the innocent third-party person coming in asking them for variances, while he's got his money and he's gone. It's not, it's not a pleasant place to be, to be the lawyer for a district or rural water system, where you're telling somebody, yeah, you bought a lot, but it's 20,000 to hook up. And they say, well, nobody ever told me that. Well, you should have asked us, because obviously, he didn't say it. And we, and not with this district, but I've been in that situation with other districts or systems, where people come in and they're told one thing by the seller, and then they show up. You know, without reminiscing some of these situations, I don't even see where the preliminary plat's a valid plat at this point. Nothing prevents them from coming back. And as I told the commission when I spoke, as to the variances, there's a practicality that I, that I've talked to the district about, that they're willing to sit down and try to figure out a path. But somebody has to sit down. Right now, the system barely supports the existing houses, there's special treatment obligations, the water system, there's some lots that yet to be built that are entitled to be, to hook up into the system. This is, this is just a bad situation, made so by the individual who's now asking to add seven lots to it. Nothing prevents them, if you reject this preliminary plat, from them sitting down and figuring out how this relationship should work, and how to go forward, and coming back with a new plat that answers those issues. And I'll tell you frankly, it can't be the seven lots, unless he's willing to write a large check, because the system won't support it. I'm certainly open to questions on how the district works, or anything on the district relationships, if anybody has some.
Way more technical in nature, the district has a single well, is that right?
Yeah, a single well, they don't own it. It's actually on the property that, so the history of the lawsuit is, Howie owned all this land, and it was all supposed to be this large subdivision that the county approved under a PUD, I believe, back at the time. But it didn't, the well is significantly, do we have a pointer here? I put somebody's eye out here. The well's basically down in this area. It's quite a ways from the development, so they bring the water up, and so they have paid to keep this well up on somebody else's land. There are no easements of record, and if, I submitted a letter, the district went to DNR and asked for a low-interest loan. We ran into problems with it, though, because they, they don't own any of the, they don't own the water source. And the gentleman who owns all this land now, who bought it in a for-sale, essentially, he won't give them an agreement. He's, they've got kind of like a handshake, and he says, because he doesn't know what he wants to do with it, so he doesn't want any, he's been good to work with, but he won't give us anything of writing. And DNR's not real big on loaning you money when you don't have anything in writing. And that well source is a poor-quality well source, it's got high-rading nucleides, and so what you do in some systems, you have essential treatment, they couldn't do that here, the houses are already built, so they had to do water softeners and reverse osmosis for, to make consumable water. The district has, provides the saltwater and has, everybody has opened their house for inspection on a rotating basis to qualify for DNR standards, to make sure the systems are working. And so, I mean, these are some of the discussions. If somebody wants to put something here, they're not even in the district, we can't even enforce those rules.
My point, and where I was going, is it looked to me like the lots were of size where each lot would then be able to poke its own hole and drill its own well. And my assumption is, is that those lots would then likely have the same water problems that the current homeowners are dealing with. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think so. There actually had originally been a well up here, kind of into the north, and the quality is so bad, they basically abandoned that well.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Wizerik?
All right.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I'm sure I worded this right. I'm not a great believer in getting legalese involved in these matters, it just deepens the pot for everybody, especially when you start digging in your pocketbook. And Colin can tell you that, I'm always grumbling to him. But is there any, I still can't believe, somehow, you're a reasonable person, you work for reasonable people that have dug in their pocket, and they've certainly got to be unhappy, and they're certainly close to this issue. It's got to be close to Mr. Howie's on his best as well. Do you think there's any hope of, starting with one thing at a time? In other words, you, there seems to be some review needed of the well and the situation, access, and the pond, in other words, for a future? Somebody's got to sit there and not just look over the top of their thumb, half an acre away, and say, this is what the well needs. Somebody really looks at it, and if we're going to look at additional lots or a future for this well, do we abandon this one and do another one? What do we do?
Yeah, so there was a preliminary engineering study done for the system, and several recommendations made, but without, it would take an agreement with the landowner that Mr. Howie signed, and, because you'd have to locate some of the improvements on there, including wanting to be in storage and some improvements at the well site. You know.
All I was getting at was that if we could get that started, that motion, just even the access, and get some insight as to that, so that they're sitting down together. I think there's funding, I think there's help and assistance out there, albeit free all the way to expensive, but.
Yeah, I will tell you.
It would move.
I will tell you, I, we have attempted to make contact. I mean, I, when Mr. Howie hired Mr. Tellinghuisen, the first thing says, let's sit down, I mean, let's try to find some common ground, which is generally what I do, because this is a bad situation for everybody. But at the same time, districts sometimes go, well, if you can figure out a way to add five more people to help pay for everything, that doesn't hurt either. But there's got to be some cost hurdles you got to figure out, and it depends on what they're demanding. As to the neighbor that Mr. Howie sued, he's not been real receptive to helping us improve the system, given the fact that he's got locked in this lawsuit that he didn't think he needed to be in. You know, they got to live with the court order, they got to figure that one out. So the door's open. Whether an agreement can be made, I don't know, because I don't know what they demand. I know when they're coming in and asking for seven lots, that's a lot, that's a lot more difficult than coming in and asking for three, if they come to a district that already has capacity issues, already has storage issues, always has, already has these things. I'll just tell you what I tell when I represent a rural water system, and the developer comes in and says, I want 20 lots. Well, you got to account for extra storage, you got to account for extra main size, you got to account for where the pressure's going to be. If he wants five on these 20 acres instead of 20, well, then, those costs differ.
Okay. My thought was to try to give Mr. Tellinghuisen's client some motivation to look down the road, that we might get to at least the Bradsky Road problem, and, I mean, that far, and that's going to be an expensive one, and one right now, that 40, what, homeowners out there are standing all alone, and if, all I'm trying to do is get this moving. And I think the only way to get it moving is, is say that if you get this at least started, we can look at then phase two, phase three of getting through this thing. Otherwise, all we're doing is continuing, or we're denying things that eventually have got to be done.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
My decision today is going to be based on the number of folks that came to our commission meeting the other day with concerns, and addressing their emotions, and I'll just leave it at that.
I think it didn't go well, I assume.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I think the best incentive here for us is to adjourn and walk away from this. I find these kinds of issues so tedious, because what happens is, people have come in with, in bad faith or with bad circumstances, in situations that should have been worked out between the parties, as we've talked about long ago, why we have dwelt with this as long as we have, is to me very frustrating. It's, the ideal situation is to do what's been suggested, is that the parties come together, create some kind of reconciliation. They are the people who have the time and incentives to do so. We don't profit or suffer from it. And if that doesn't happen, I, this idea of bringing these things into a body like this and trying to somehow parse the whole thing and rebuild it, is, I think, just far beyond the capacity of a collective body to deal with, short of, you know, endless meetings and subcommittees and so forth. And I think we need to just step away from this and let them work to resolve it. Because we're not going to be able to do it here to the satisfaction of the parties, or maybe even to ourselves. So I'm not prepared to spend too much more time on this myself, but, because I do think that there are legal and expert sources that they can draw upon, and the good faith that needs to prevail. And if it doesn't, I don't think this will ever be resolved.
Mr. Chair. Any further questions for Mr. Wizerik? Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I make one comment?
Go ahead.
As I said, my preference today is you just deny the preliminary plat. If the determination is to continue it, I would ask that you continue it for a date sort of maybe six months out, because the difficulty I run into is, they can all put it on the calendar any time, and I got to be constantly watching that, and then I can show up, and we can get another continuance, and I just soon, if we're going to, if you're not going to deny it, that you don't revisit it for a while to force them to try to come deal with us. And then I'm not showing up to talk to you to tell you to do something, they either come forth with a plan, or we deal with it six months from now.
Noted. Anything else?
Chair.
Go ahead, Jim.
I would be inclined to deny it, because I think it would send a message that perhaps is more persuasive, as the gentleman suggested. And continuing it, I think is sort of an open-ended, backhanded endorsement, which is not what we want to do. But to deny it, I think is a much more, a much stronger message, and I think will result in some profit for both parties.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
I'll make the motion as proposed, I'm going to make the motion to deny.
I'll second.
I noticed that there was other people in the audience. I, I do like, would like to hear from them, and so if, if you're okay, I'd like to do that.
Yep.
We can, we can keep, if we could hold that motion and, and you can bring that forth, but I, I would like to hear from everybody in the audience.
I'll hold that motion.
Thank you. Sir, do you, would you like to come up and speak on this item?
Oh, I'm just here for a rezone, to build a house.
Sir, we may have long since gone by your item, there's.
What's the name, your name?
This did not need to go.
I, I don't remember seeing that on the agenda.
Oh, we can talk to you.
And then, there is no other, no other folks that wish to speak on this item? All right. So, as promised, Ron, I'll go back to you if you want to restate your motion.
My motion is to deny as proposed.
And I will second.
Motion and second for denial, further, further discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I only have one reason that I'm hesitant to deny. And that's that, I used to, in my business, when two people are at opposite ends, I used to tell, I have a customer that's unhappy with me and our performance and I'm unhappy because they, they blew up or destroyed whatever we made for them. I used to tell them, I'll give you $2,000 and I'll keep $2,000, we're both going to go talk to the attorney and then explain our problems to them. And I said, at the end of the $2,000, the attorney's not even going to understand the problem. So we've got $4,000 already to work with to solve the thing. And whether I'm happy or unhappy doesn't matter, whether you're happy or unhappy and satisfied, that doesn't matter, just getting it solved. And that's what I think we're dealing with here. These folks, both sides have got to consider, $100,000 worth of attorney's fees in this thing is just a probably a drop in the bucket before it's all ever done. I mean, we're talking some serious dollars here by the time it continues on and on. And if that's the case, you know what $100,000 would add to a well project? A lot. That's why I'm hesitant to deny it. I think somehow we've got to motivate to get things done. And I think denying isn't going to motivate, that sense tells Mr. Tellinghuesen, he's just got a planning commission that's not going to go his way until he does something more harsh in the, in the legal field to direct us to do so. That's where I'm concerned.
Go ahead, Sandy.
Charlie.
Sure.
Gordon Howie knows what he has to do to get this done, okay? So he either does it or he doesn't do it. It, it's that simple. But it's not up to us to be concerned about how much it's going to cost him to do it. He made the decision to go ahead with this project, and if he's going to go ahead, he's got to finish it and he's got to pay for it, and that's it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think you're absolutely right, is we need to create some incentive, and Mr. Howie will very soon calculate whether this is all worth it, and if it is, then there will be some movement. Otherwise, it may end up being as the status quo dictates. But I think you're right, and, and I think that's what he needs is some incentive. If there's enough profit in those lots, he'll figure out how to settle this.
Yeah, I agree.
So, question that I have for staff is, what would denial without prejudice mean in this instance? Would it only save them the fees of, of the planning process?
Yes, and they'd have to come back with something similar, but it, you know, if the subdivision regulation variances, he'd either have to build the roads or submit assurances to do those, but he couldn't come back with the subdivision regulation variances for at least a year.
So deny is a year. Denial without prejudice is a year, but he saves the fees of the planning process.
Right, the planning process fees are pretty minimal, I mean, in all intensive purposes, even if he comes back with something different, he'd have to start with the layout plat, which is $100 with that process, so.
Okay. Further discussion? Thank you. Seeing none, hearing none, motion is to deny the preliminary plat 21-06. All those in favor of the denial, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 14, County Board Report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the March 22nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, with the exception of the subdivision regulation variance, or I guess, and subdivision regulation variance for Grandview Land LLC, Dan Lowes, Gordon Howie was denied as we spoke. And in addition, the Board of Commissioners did continue the ordinance amendments on the accessory dwelling units. They had two recommendations that they wanted staff to address in that ordinance. They had a question about the owner occupied requirement for that property and the size requirement. So staff will be bringing back those two requests to them at the meeting on the 26th.
No items from the public? Items from staff?
We just have the building permit report that's in front of you. Like I said, our single family dwelling permits are up significantly from this time last year. This time last year, we had 11 single family, this year we have 34. And the overall permits that we issued in our office last year, this time there were 79, and this year is 152. So we're definitely seeing that growth in the county.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
Brittany, what, are you seeing the majority of the development? I assume it's east of Rapid?
Yes. In that three mile plating jurisdiction, there's a couple of subdivisions, Murphy Ranch Estates and Prairie Fire, that we're seeing quite a few lots. We are seeing development around Hill City, it's just that the land is more available on the eastern part of the county than on the western part.
Is there a particular area of the county where you see the more expensive homes, the more expensive permits?
The western, in the hills area. The, the homes that were issuing building permits for Easter year, you know, normal, smaller lot, you know, they have the point two acre lot sizes, single family residences, so.
How about commercial, any commercial activity?
We're not seeing a whole lot of that, there is a little bit of activity along the 16 corridor, though.
Further questions for staff? Okay, items from the membership.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I don't know if this will impact me here or not, but I did get a letter from the federal courts for jury duty for April and May, so apparently they're going to give me 10 days' notice if I need to report, so I'll keep, I'll keep Brittany and Jerry informed if, if I'm going to miss, miss a session.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for reminding me, because I'm on jury duty now, starting tomorrow, so I could also be in a somewhat similar circumstance, but.
Federal or county?
County, I guess, yeah, not federal.
You can't zoom from there?
I'd be perfectly happy to, but.
Anything else?
I think they'd frown on that.
Anything else from the membership? Hearing none, seeing none, next item is adjournment, is our motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.